Good evening and welcome to the May 11, 2023 Meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm Lee Cross. If you'd please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening once again, and thank you for being here. I don't believe a roll call is necessary as we are all present and in person. The first, the next item on our agenda is the Awards and Recognition section, which I will turn over to Dr. Andrew Bown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite Grant to the podium, and we'd love to spend a little time getting to know you.
Hello there, Dr. Bown and members of the board. I'm Grant LaCamp. I'm an Interior Design major here at Johnson County. And in fact, I'll be graduating next week. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself. Interior Design is a second career for me. And my, my first career was working for a federal government contractor in the Washington DC area. In fact, I was with the Department of Defense. And my last job that I had was processing military officer nominations to the military services and also civilian positions in the Department of Defense for approval by the Secretary of Defense and the President of the United States. So it was, it was very important work, and I loved my colleagues. They were all great people, but I was approaching 40 years old, and I'm thinking, okay, what am I going to do now? You know, because the work, while important, wasn't very challenging for me. So I was thinking that a career change might be in order. So I was thinking about what, what I wanted to do and what kinds of things I was good at, and so I decided on Interior Design. So in order to do that, I had to go back to school. I had already been for my bachelor's and my master's degree, but, but for Interior Design, I had to go back to school. So I also wanted to move back to the Midwest because my family lives in Oklahoma and Arkansas. And I also wanted to kind of get away from the DC area because the cost of living there was really outrageous. So, so I came to Kansas City here, and I enrolled at JCCC. And this is where I've been for the past two and a half years. I would say that here at JCCC, I've, I've probably learned more about myself in the past two and a half years than probably I did the decade beforehand, really. And that's not just because of the classes I've taken and the people I've met here. It's also because of the extracurricular activities I've been involved in. Like I've been a board member in the Interior Design Student Association and a member of the Inter Club Council. And I was also a member of the JCCC Art Collective. And I've also been involved in the Student Wellness Program. And my second internship that I completed for the Interior Design Program was on the JCCC Student Design Team for the Casey Symphony Designer Showhouse. And so all of which has been a really wonderful experience. And I'd like to repay that in this forum by mentioning some of the professors that really inspired me and made my time here so wonderful. Like, first of all, the entire Interior Design faculty, just across the board, is really, really good people, really, really great people. And especially Darla Green and Katherine Grube, whom I had the most classes with. And also in the drafting program, Lydia Klein and David Mottelbog were, were great people, too. And in my art classes that I took, Keiko Kira for my Drawing One class and Terry Namor for my Design Color class. And also in my Student Wellness class, Sarah Aptalon, who runs the Meditation and Mindfulness Group. And all that's been a really wonderful experience. So again, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address you tonight.
Any questions for Grant?
Congratulations on your graduation, and what a career change. So thank you for giving a shout out to your instructors as well. I just want to know what's going out of style and what should we rip out of our house? At like Wayne's Coating or what color is out?
Well, let's see. What's, well, I can tell you, let's see, what's coming, coming back in right now. I mean, there's, you know, modern design is always in, in style. And you know, all sorts of contemporary, you know, sort of spare style is, is always in right now. So, you know, you really can't go wrong with that. But I mean, it's about, really, it's about making the client, the customer, happy. You know, we, we had a, an example in Kitchen and Bath Design Class where a, our, our teacher, Christine Armstrong Scott, who owns Armstrong Kitchens, she took this project that she had, and it turned into a project for us, you know? So in the real life project, the client loved purple, really loved purple. So they got the, all the fixtures and the tile and everything in. And then the client painted the room themselves, you know, sort of a reddish-purple type, red-violet type color. So, you know, it's like, not to a lot of people's taste, but I mean, the clients were thrilled. They were just really happy with the color and the tile job. And that's what's important, you know, to make the clients happy.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Trustee Muswell.
I want to ask you what Wayne's Coating is, but I'm not going to. You're an example of somebody who came here, if I did the math right, spring of 2021.
That's right.
So we're still in COVID. We're, we're starting to come out of it. But tell us about your experience from starting in a COVID environment and then moving back toward in-person classes. How, how did you navigate that, and how did we as a college handle that?
Well, first of all, it was a big change for me because the last time I was in school was in 2004. So, you know, Zoom and stuff didn't even exist. So that was a totally new concept for me. Yeah, my first semester, most of my classes were, were on Zoom, except for hand drafting class, which was in-person. I think for the most part, it was handled pretty well. You know, we, it was, it was a bit of a change, and we still have issues, you know, with Zoom, you know, trying to figure out who's going to talk, you know, people talking over each other and things like that. But, but for the most part, it worked pretty well, I think. I mean, it, by the time we've got, yeah, I'm not going to lie. By the time we got back to in-person classes, I was ready to be back in in-person classes. So I was really happy about that. But, but still, it, it was, it went pretty well. It was, it was a good experience, not always smooth, but for the most part, it was, it went pretty well.
Thank you. Any other questions for Grant? Trustee Smith-Everett.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say congratulations. That time next week will be a lot of fun. And then I chose really bright colors today because I want, it's just a great time of year to celebrate all of you that have put in so much hard work to be here. So just two quick questions. My first one is, do you feel like you have belonged here at JCCC? And if so, can you describe or explain what it is that has made you feel that you belong or not? And then my other question is, what are you going to do next?
Well, first of all, regarding belonging, yes, I felt very accepted. And I feel I do belong here. I was, I admit, I was a little bit nervous coming here, you know, because I was going to school with people half my age and such. So I was, as I was telling Dr. Bown, I was a little bit nervous about they'd run circles around the old man here. But I've managed to hold my own, so, and I think I've, I've done a reasonably good job with that. So, but yeah, no, everyone has made me feel very welcome here, you know? I, I haven't met one, one, you know, as I was saying, nasty person once, really. I mean, everyone here has been wonderful. And we're just like, my fellow students and I in Interior Design, we're like a family, really. I mean, you know, we text each other and, you know, email and such. And we're saying, yes, we got to stay, stay in contact with each other when we get out into the, into the field there. So yes, I've, I've felt like I belong very, very well here. And as for next, I know a lot of my fellow students are going to a four-year university, but I'm getting out into the, into the industry there. So I'm on the, on the job search now. So I'm looking around at different design firms and showrooms and such around the Casey area. So hopefully, I'll be able to get a position with one of them.
Fantastic. Well, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Grant? Grant, thank you very much. Best of luck. Did you have anything else?
I did not.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bown. The, the next item on our agenda is the Open Forum. The Open Forum is a regularly scheduled part of our board meetings. And the speakers wanting to make public comment via Zoom must register the day before by 5:00 PM or in-person here 15 minutes prior. Is that right?
That is correct.
And you have to provide your name, city of residence, name of any group that you are representing, the topic of discussion, a brief one or two sentence summary of the presentation, as well as the email address and phone number the speaker will be using to access Zoom. Zoom link and conference call number will be listed on the JCC Board Meetings page. And registered speakers should be familiar with the Zoom functionality before logging in to the Board of Trustees meeting. Registered speakers should wait until they are called upon by the chair to speak, at which time, the recognized speaker will be granted electronic access to the board. Speakers wanting to make public comment through this forum, I already said that, excuse me. Each registered speaker is allotted five minutes to speak. If there is a significant number of registered speakers, the time will be reduced for each registered speaker at the discretion of the chair. And when addressing the board, we ask, please, that registered speakers are asked to maintain, to remain at the podium and should be respectful, civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. Comments may not inflict or threaten harm, cause a breach of the peace, consist of fighting words, incite violence, or encourage anyone to commit a crime, cause a panic, and is not obscene or defamatory. The Chair of the Board has the authority to keep order and impose reasonable restrictions on any disruptive behavior of those participating in a board meeting. And I read that every time, just so that it's out there and people are aware, so that there's no surprises. I don't believe we have anybody for public forum tonight. So therefore, that will end that portion of the board meeting, and we'll move on next to Board Reports. And our first report will be the Student Senate Report by Mr. Daniel Gonzalez.
Good evening.
Good afternoon. Good evening. So I would like to start off with the first update I'd like to give you guys for Student Senate Elections. For the Executive Board, Apuna Gonzalez was elected as president. Marook Amir was vice president. Anthony Treasure was elected as treasurer, or Anthony Reima was elected as treasurer, and Liz Hernandez was elected as parliamentarian. For the returning senators, we have Baxter Rhine, Jayden Hauntz, Kiran Swanson, Sherry Osborne, and we will have Hank Wolf continuing, continuing as our Clear and Connect Liaison. At this time, I'd like to hand it over for further updates to our incoming Student Senate President, Apuna Gonzalez.
Hello, I'm Apuna Gonzalez. I will be the upcoming Student Senate President, and I would like to give some updates from this year. So from the Student Senate Funding Request, we've been able to fund a total of 21 events, awarding over $37,000 out of $38,000 from the Student Activity Fee. We have been able to approve seven new organizations, and Student Senate has led two service projects, which were JCCC Gives and Service Week. And both of them were very successful and benefited the Johnson County community.
And I'd just like to end with, I came here, Student Senate came here with the goal this year of increasing student involvement through funding and support of clubs in order to enhance the student experience. I think with the Student Senate team this, this year, we've done a great job. And I'd just like to congratulate the Student Senate and my fellow Executive Board members on doing an excellent job this semester.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Gonzalez and his team?
I'll go ahead and make a comment.
Sure.
Thank you for your leadership. I'm sure I'm speaking for everyone on the board when I say that. But we did have a quick question. A Gonzalez and a Gonzalez.
Yes, she is my, she is my sister.
That's awesome. That is really awesome. It's just really fun to hear about all of your accomplishments, and we appreciate your monthly reports to us. So they're extremely valuable, gives us a pulse of what's going on. So thank you very much, and we look forward to your reports as well. Thank you.
Any other questions for Daniel?
Will we see Daniel at graduation next Friday? I can't remember what you're, you're graduating in.
I'll be graduating with an associate degree and a cybersecurity certificate.
Right, okay. Well, we'll see you on stage.
Oh, possibly, I think so, yeah.
Well, we'll be there. I hope you're there.
Aren't you also graduating high school?
Yes, I am.
Graduating high school and college.
Yes.
This young man is going to take over the world. He's incredible. So congratulations, because you're going to be, well, you probably already are, very busy in the next two weeks, golly.
What will you do next, Daniel?
I'll be transferring to KU for a computer engineering degree.
Right on. Any other questions for Daniel?
We had one other, because we're very interested. Now, is your sister in high school?
Yes, she is.
See, that was our question. So you're both in high school. And where do you go to school, remind us?
Blue Valley Northwest.
Blue Valley Northwest. Are you both in the same class then? You're a junior.
I'm a junior right now.
She's a junior, and I'll, I'll be graduating on the senior.
Okay. That was my assumption, but I wanted to clarify that. So congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. We're glad you chose JCCC.
That's very exciting.
Were you the ones that had the purple bathroom since Blue Eye Northwest is purple? That wasn't you guys. We love purple at Blue Eye Northwest.
Thank you very much. Best of luck. The next item on our agenda is the College Lobbyist Report by the gentleman from Shawnee, Mr. Dick Carter.
Trustee Muswell, I'd be happy to explain what Wayne's Coating is at a later time.
Can't wait. Probably, you probably had a YouTube video.
Well, I went to KU, and that's one of the classes that we took.
Probably a prerequisite to everything.
Oh, boy.
All right, we're going to need neutral corners here.
Well, the good news is, the report this month will be a little bit shorter than it maybe normally is because of the amount of time, the length of time between the last trustee meeting and this meeting, as well as not a lot has occurred since the legislature formally adjourned. And, and the governor still has a couple of bills that she's reviewing, whether or not to sign or to veto or to allow become law without her signature. The, out of 800 bills introduced this session, so this is a two-year session, the beginning of a two-year session, so everything carries over to next year. Out of 800 bills introduced this session, only a little more than 10% made their way to the governor's office for signature. That, I don't know what that track's like in previous sessions, but as I was putting the numbers together, I just found that to be quite interesting out of the number of bills introduced, that only 10% made it, made it across the finish line.
That's high, though, still, isn't it? 80? Sorry to interrupt.
Well, it would be, it would be approximately 80 bills. And contained in those bills are conference committee reports, which would have multiple bill subjects in them. So you can play with the numbers a little bit, but.
I'm sure they read them all.
And we will see, we will see more bills next year. That will be fun, I'm sure. With regard to state budget and receipts that are coming into the state, it's important to note, for the first time in 30 months, that the April receipts did not hit the mark. They were 30 million off. That's really considered flat when you're talking about a budget the size of, of the state of Kansas. But it's worth noting, considering the upward trend that we've had over the past 30 months. The Consensus Revenue Estimating Group did meet on the same day that the trustee meeting was last month and adjusted numbers up as far as expectations are concerned. So we can take into consideration that those numbers were adjusted up. The other component that likely feeds into the reason that numbers were flat or maybe down a little bit is something called SALT parity, and it's state and local tax parity. That bill or that initiative went into effect, or was passed last year and goes into effect for the 2023 tax year. And it allows the deductibility of state income taxes for C Corps, S Corps, and LLCs. So it's not, it's not unlike some of the tax structure that, that we had from 2012 to 2016, 18 timeframe. That, that very well could make a difference in how those numbers are coming into the state. And so that's something that we'll, that we'll be paying attention to as, as time rolls on and as the state approaches the end of the fiscal year on June 30th. The governor vetoed a provision in the budget bill related to DEI. That's something that we'd been following and watching as it related to higher education institutions and their hiring and recruiting efforts. The legislature was not able to muster the two-thirds constitutional amount of votes in their body to override the veto. And so that veto was sustained. And that's a little bit of something that I talked about at the last, at the last meeting. Interestingly, just before, during the omnibus and veto session, the Legislative Post Audit Committee met, and they are recommending an audit of state universities with regard to diversity, equity, and inclusion, whether it's hiring, whether it's departments, or whether it's initiatives on campus. Community colleges, the two-year sectors are not included in that scope of the audit. But I will be monitoring those, those proceedings as, as they continue to happen. I don't know when we'll see that audit actually presented to the legislature. Things are pretty backlogged at Legislative Post Audit. And that's the arm, the branch of the legislature that serves as their auditing arm. Senate Bill 25 is the bill number that is the omnibus budget bill. We don't have any money in that bill, but the reason we're watching it is because there's language included in that bill that, that provides guidance on how to, how we can use the dollars that the legislature provided at the very end of the session with regard to apprenticeships or the two-year programs. The governor has not yet signed Senate Bill 25, and it's a little bit unclear at this point what provisions exist in that bill that may or may not make it through. At least, that's a budget bill, and so she has the ability to line item veto provisions in that bill. That won't be one of them, we're certain. With regard to tax policy in the state of Kansas, there's been no significant movement on tax policy this year. The legislature, before they adjourned, and at the beginning of April, passed a fairly significant tax policy package. It had the flat tax, it had a 0% food sales tax on January of 2024, and it increased the thresholds for Social Security income exemption on tax forms. That bill was vetoed through a series of attempts in the Senate. The, the Senate failed twice to override the governor's veto. And so there is no, there is no change in tax policy with regard to how you file taxes, some of the other provisions that were contained in that bill. We are still waiting to see what happens with Senate Bill 8. That's the bill that I talked about last month that contains a number of, of issues in that bill. The one that, that we're watching closely is the Government Competition piece. It was formerly known as Senate Bill 252, or the Health Club, the Health Club Bill. But it includes childcare, food service, and health, health, health clubs. So we'll continue to watch that. The other piece that's in there that's of, of interest is the revenue-neutral rate notices, the continuation of the payment, the way those, those notices go out. There's some changes to the, to the statutes as regards to property tax appeals are also in that bill. Like I said, there's about 18 different subjects in that bill. Governor has not signed it yet, but we've received indications, just bits and pieces. You pick up, you pick up little tidbits that lead you to believe that, that that bill will not be signed into law, and that she will likely veto it. Probably not enough to bring folks back to, to Topeka for a special session. But the next item is, the Education Bill did not pass, the Funding Bill did not pass before legislators went home for their April break. It did pass during the omnibus, the three-day omnibus session. And there are some, some items in that bill, and there, and there's going to be some controversy, and it could lead to probably potentially a lawsuit. It should be a Funding Bill, but there's policy contained in it. And so the question is, can you line item something in an education funding bill that is, is policy-oriented? And that's, I think that's the, the debate that's going on right now. The governor has been signaling at various events or press conferences or when she goes to, to visit different, different attractions or different places across the state. She'll frequently take questions from the media while she's there. And lots of times, those questions will be about other things than what, whatever is being presented at that particular event. And she's indicated several times that there's provisions in that bill that she, she does not care for or would not sign. And so that, that leads us to believe, will she allow the, the bill to become law without her signature? Will she veto it? Certainly, if she vetoes the Education Funding Bill for K-12, a special session will be required. And I skipped over the first part. When the legislature adjourned on Friday, April 28th, they adjourned, sign, die. So they're done. They're not coming back. And the 2023 session is concluded. So should something of that magnitude need to occur, she would need to call the legislature back for a special session. Once they're back in town, anything can happen. And it's, and it's anybody's game. You do not have to come back and only address the issues that, that the special session has been called for. So we're continuing to, to wait and watch. Most of these bills were delivered to her office on May 5th. She has 10 days, her office has 10 days to review and, and sign those bills or not sign them or veto them. So the only bill that we still have outstanding that we're watching as far as the college is concerned is the language that clarifies how we receive payment for the driver education program. And, and that bill was passed during the omnibus session and is awaiting action from, from her office. So what's next? We will have interims. I was doing a little research today. The interim committee topic list wasn't presented until the middle of June last year. And so I'm assuming that we're probably on a similar timeline. With the momentum building for the 2024 session and 2024 being an election year, you can imagine that we'll have some interesting topics that we'll be studying over the course of the, over the summer and fall. It'll be the social issues. Definitely, there will be tax policy in there, whether it's, whether it's valuation caps, whether it's looking at taxpayer bill of rights-type legislation and, and potential proposals. Those will be some of the topics that you can anticipate seeing for an interim study list. We're also watching the local filing deadlines. Sometimes that can give you a sense of what the next election looks like for, for either state and Senate races, for statewide races. And so we'll kind of, we'll kind of take a look at what, what that looks like after the June filing deadline is, is concluded. All in all, it was a better year than we expected. Certainly a better year than where we started when the, when the 2023 session began in Topeka this year. And I think I would just stop there, Mr. Chair, and see if there's any questions or conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any questions for Mr. Carter? Trustee.
You mentioned the legislature, the possibility of them being called back in session. Then you mentioned the May 15th date. What's the timeline for them being called back into session?
Well, the, the state's fiscal year concludes on June 30th, and the education funding would pick up on July 1. I would imagine it could be sometime in June, should that, should that be necessary? Maybe towards the end of June? There's real no, I mean, we're not really sure what that looks like, but, but I think those are some key, key dates that keep in mind as far as funding is concerned.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment.
Trustee Smith-Everett.
I was listening NPR on the way in, and almost verbatim, same thing. Sometimes you're quite a bit ahead of the news about the, what's going on in the governor's office and so forth. And I just want to thank you for the depth you give. You give a real wide perspective, which helps us keep account of all the things that are important all over the county and the state, but also particularly important to us. And I appreciate both of those scopes when you present. So thanks, thanks for keeping track of it, because goodness knows it's, there's a lot out there to keep track of, so we appreciate it.
Seeing no other questions, Dick, I'll say thank you, and thanks to Heather Morgan, too, and all of our strategic partners in the Community College Movement and in the state of Kansas. state of Kansas. Many of us sitting here, I know, helped talk to people we know, and we certainly appreciate all your work and effort. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a report by the Faculty Association by, I believe, the new president, Andrea Vu, Professor Andrea Vu. Are you the new president, or are you vice?
Soon.
Soon.
Very soon.
Lurking.
Yeah.
We don't know where Brett is, but she's going to be.
President-elect.
Yes, thank you.
Andrea Vu is missing.
Before I start, I just want to do a little ad lib. Apuna, who is going to be the student senate president next year, was recently featured in one of the JCC Student Experience Stories, so in a program that she kind of completed this spring. So it's a really neat story. I would just encourage you to find that, and you can learn all about it. Anyway. So hello. My name's Andrea Vu, and I am an Associate Professor of Political Science and the newly-elected president of the JCC Faculty Association. I know quite a lot of you, so I'm not going to give a background and bore you with the details of how I got here. I think I've covered that in a prior thing, but I'm always willing to tell my story. Anyway, so as I just mentioned, I'm recently elected. I do want to go ahead and tell you who the other officers are, so you kind of have an idea of that. Amanda Glass of Chemistry is the vice president, and then we have Lisa Parrott in Business Administration as the secretary/recorder. Dave Krug will continue, and he's in accounting, he will continue on as treasurer. And then Irene Olivares in History is going to be our UNISERV rep. So that kind of gives, and then, of course, Brett will remain as the past president. So that kind of gives you an idea of who the executive committee is moving forward. I do want to say a big thank you to Brett Cooper on behalf of the faculty for his leadership and advocacy this past year. I'd also like to add a personal thanks to Brett for his mentorship. Stepping into this role is extremely daunting. It's been enormously valuable to have Brett's example to observe and learn from, and kind of get a feel for what to expect as president in this role. I can kind of say the same for all the past presidents, really, like having their example and advice and then counsel is going to be really instrumental to my growth as we progress throughout this role. Really, I also look forward to working with all of you, and would like to say thank you in advance for helping me learn and develop as a leader. I'm not entirely certain what my style of leadership is, but I do know that talking to people and hearing their perspectives is going to be central to my time in this role, in this position. And I think hearing from the folks in this room is going to be a key part of my development. So we're not always going to agree. I think I've said this to some of you before, and we all agree that we're not going to agree. But that's okay. And so having a discussion is important because it's helping me understand different perspectives and get a feel for things, and that's kind of going to be a huge key. So I also think this kind of applies as we start to onboard new hires, particularly those in upper-level administrative positions. So one thing I've really appreciated hearing from all of the many candidates who have visited us this spring is the desire to reach out and talk to the folks at lower levels of the organization. So while we may not always see the employees who work at the ground level, they do the work that makes this institution successful. They have the institutional memory that brings real continuity in organizations, and I really look forward to meeting all those new leaders, hearing their perspectives, and then also having a space for us to share our perspectives with them. In faculty news, the KNEA State Representative Assembly was April 22 and 23. This year, institutions of higher education had a pretty big presence at the assembly. There was quite a bit of discussion about support for higher education UNISERVs, as well as working with other higher ed associations to advocate and advance higher education faculty issues and concerns. So we look forward to continuing those conversations with our peers around the state. Next, the STEM poster symposium was April 17 in the Colab. It was an amazing event. It was great. There were 155 posters presented by 164 students. There were 16 sponsors who donated money for the symposium, and then 70 faculty, staff, administrators, and trustee volunteered to judge the posters. So at this symposium, just so you know, students presented their research or other projects in a conference-style poster session. The projects are completed by individual students, small groups, or classes in conjunction with a STEM course assignment, an honors project, an independent project, or some other type of research project. So the symposium enables students to get a conference experience, develop their ability to communicate STEM information, collaborate with others, and hear feedback from experts in the field. For those of you who were on the board pre-pandemic, you may recall Brenda Edmonds and Lori Slavin came to the board in 2019, and their students came and shared some of their posters. So you might remember that, but the students are all very excited to share their research and what they've learned. This year, $6,500 in scholarships were awarded to students based on their STEM poster presentations. There were two $1,000 scholarships awarded and nine $500 scholarships awarded. So I just want to congratulate all the students on their success at the symposium, and then say thank you to all the sponsors and the judges for making that event very successful. You can find out about the symposium on JCC's website. I actually just Googled JCC STEM Symposium, and there's a whole webpage that gives way more detail than I can provide in this brief report. Next, it's worth noting, the Center for Teaching and Learning is seeking faculty for the Faculty Programming Committee for next year, and this committee will create and organize interdisciplinary faculty learning opportunities in collaboration with the Center for Teaching and Learning Faculty Fellows. So they'll be doing things like faculty workshops, book discussions, beg, borrow, and steal sessions, in addition to some other things. So Dr. Farrell Hoyt-Danob announced it in the most recent edition of our JCCC Faculty Development Newsletter, and in that newsletter, there is a link for faculty to apply for that. The deadline is May 19, so next Friday. The JCC Employee Awards were on Tuesday, May 2, in the Cap Fed Room in the Rehneer Center, and so dozens of awards were presented to folks from around the college for outstanding service or teaching, faculty excellence in research, leadership with a key project or event, sustainability, innovation, and exemplification of JCCC values, in addition to many other things. I couldn't put it all in here. So it was a very nice event, and I know that the employees really do appreciate being recognized. So that was lovely. Next, as you already probably know, is finals week. So students are completing final exams and projects, and then the faculty are immersed in their grading. We've already had several graduation celebrations, such as the Police Academy graduation and the CLER program recognition. This Friday, or tomorrow, is the honors graduation, and then next Friday, May 19, are the college's main commencement ceremonies. Lastly, the Faculty Association is having its end-of-the-year party tomorrow evening at the Quavira Falls Clubhouse from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., and you are all welcome to join us. Everybody is welcome. We don't exclude, so please do join us. We'll have some delightful food and talking, probably, but, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Professor Vu?
So Andrea, tell me about, what do you have to grade? I mean, what are you doing now?
Well, I actually did get caught up a little bit earlier this week on some of my grading. So currently, I just have one class's final exams to grade, and then I have my students reflect on their semester. I call it like three takeaways. And so they have to think about what they thought the class was going to be, and then what the big takeaways that they're going to carry forward are. So they have to still do that. Those are still coming in.
I was saying, you have a lot of grading of essay-type work.
Essays, yeah, lots of essays. You know, in a lot of our areas, we think about writing as a pretty critical skill. So I do a mix of different types of assessments, but definitely essays.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Welcome aboard, when you're official.
Oh, Monday. I'm sorry. I should have said, it's official on Monday.
I'd like to say welcome, and I think you'll be a great leader.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea.
The next item on our agenda is a report for the Johnson County Education Research Triangle by Trustee Musel.
The Research Triangle met the first week of May. The board met. The numbers continue to come in strong because it's based on a sales tax of 1.08 cent on all sales in Johnson County. The April numbers were 8.5% over the 2022 April numbers. So as I mentioned before, got ad nauseam, inflation helps when your tax is based on a sales tax percentage. So the three legs of the stool, KU Edwards, KU Clinical Cancer Center, and K-State Olathe are all benefiting from this. At the board meeting, President Linton was there from Kansas State and talked about new efforts K-State has to try to bring some additional programming to the K-State Olathe campus, which has lagged behind the other two. We always get a great report from Roy Jensen about the KU Cancer Clinic and the clinical trials that are going on there, and the successes that should make us all very proud of the fact that the JSEC tax was passed in 2008 and is funding that, because he will tell you upfront that NCI designation would not have been possible without that additional funding that continues to help them do great things in the cancer research side. And Stuart Day at the KU Edwards Campus gives a report every time about how their programs are going, and they've added a number of new programs in the last couple of years, and their enrollment overall is growing strong, and those programs are doing very well. So it continues to do what it was intended to do in 2008 when it was presented to the voters.
I think it was a program with immense foresight. Does that conclude your report, Mr. Trustee?
It does.
Thank you once again. The next item on our agenda is the, excuse me, any questions for Trustee Musel before we move on? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is the report for the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I really do not have a report other than to announce our next meeting, which is June 2 and 3 in Dodge City. We will be at Dodge Community College, Dodge City Community College. So that concludes my report.
Very good. Any questions for Trustee Ingram? Trustee, okay. The next item on our agenda is a report for the JCC Foundation by Trustee Ratan.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Another reminder that our Some Enchanted Evening event is on November 11, 2023, so 11-11, easy to remember. The sponsorship and decor committee met this week, and sponsorships and tickets are available at jccc.edu/cse2023. In collaboration with financial aid, the initial scholarship awarding for 2324 school year has begun, or has occurred. And then the JCCC Foundation awarded two $1,000 scholarships and nine $500 scholarships to the STEM poster symposium that you heard Dr. Vu discuss. Congratulations to the very hard-working winners of this event. And you've heard about the Summer SIPs and scholarships. Our inaugural Women's Networking Event will take place on June 13 from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy. The goal is to bring in women in our community to learn more about our college, the foundation, and the impact of student scholarships. We'll have honorary chairs Jill, Katie, and Jennifer Gerlock, and the Collective Compass Realty Group is our event sponsor. If you'd like to RSVP, jccc.edu/sips. The Foundation Board of Directors met on April 26, and we approved a slate of officers and new directors. The officers are as follows. The president is now Jeff Alpert, past president Marshawn Butler, secretary Dr. Andy Bound, treasurer Pam Pop, vice president Tim McKee, members-at-large Sean Carana, Leo Nunick, Mike Bame, Tracy Osborne Olten. New directors on the Foundation Board are Mimi Eckert from Capital Federal Savings, Marcia Uker from JE Dunn, Trent Danzel from Olson, and Chris Gerlock from EOS Group. A great thanks to the years of service to two members who have fulfilled their term according to the JCCC Foundation bylaws, Brad Bergman and Mary Baldwin. On May 16, the Foundation will be hosting their annual members' lunch. And exciting news, we have Clint Black coming to our Midwest Trust Center on June 2. The tickets are on sale now. Visit jccc.edu/clint to learn more. The ticket proceeds will benefit student scholarships through our foundation. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Ratan. Any questions for Trustee Ratan? Thank you very much. I grew up listening to Clint Black. That's exciting. Next item on our agenda is the College Council, reported by Mr. Jason Arnett. He was editing other comments. I had other stuff to say.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Sorry, words are things. We finally have all of our meeting minutes updated on Info Hub and on the JCCC Committee meetings on the college's website. The Info Hub site is current through April, which we just approved yesterday. And then we should see the colleges reflect those minutes in the next few days. For everyone's benefit, our process is such that each month's minutes are approved in the next meeting, so we're always a month behind. But we did meet yesterday, and we've got some updates. As you know, College Council is made up of a bunch of different bodies that all get together and meet. You already know about Board of Trustees, Cabinet, Student Senate, and Faculty Association. Updates have already been delivered. We didn't have an update from Counseling yesterday, but the Academic Branch Council told us that their work on academic integrity is coming to an end, and they'll make recommendations to appropriate bodies in the near future. Staff Council is soliciting nominations now for elections at the end of May or early part of June for five seats that are coming open. In addition, the Staff Council is adding two at-large seats, and there's more details on that to come. Their meeting minutes are also available on Info Hub and in the JCCC Committee Minutes page of the college's website. Adjunct Council is holding elections as well and are experimenting with creating more of a sense of belonging within their group with some meet-and-greet-type events, which are apparently successful. So that, yay, that's good. And then the business of College Council itself was, we're beginning to review our own bylaws after we've been in operation for a little over a year. So we're going to include some additions to the co-chair section so to reflect that the person in that role gets to come and talk to you all every month, and so that there's no surprises going forward. We did have some spirited discussion regarding performance reviews, student evaluations, and the compensation study that just launched. And these discussions help all the members answer questions and gain clarity, so that when they go back to their various councils and groups, they can stomp on any misinformation and get the right stuff out to everybody, and hopefully that spreads out from there. It's a vital part of our meetings every month. We're looking forward to the fall and examining ways to better tell the story of shared governance and the College Council itself. We'll be partnering with marketing and communications to help us get that information out, and hopefully the campus and the community will understand better what shared governance does and what our role in it is. So that's all I have for you this month.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett. Any questions for Mr. Arnett?
Just a quick comment. I'm glad there's someone else that will have to endure being halfway through the meeting and sitting and waiting for their turn to speak, so you don't have to do it every month. We've enjoyed you, but I'm glad there will be somebody else you get to trade off with every once in a while.
Well, no, it won't be that. I co-chair with the president on the council.
Oh, shoot. Hopefully you got a little relief from us, but apparently not.
No, no, no. I enjoy coming to talk to you all every month. I appreciate it. So my intention is to continue in the role as long as I'm part of the council. So I appreciate that.
I have a question. Is this the first year of College Council?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that.
Will you be doing some sort of assessment of that? Did I miss that, or just evaluation? What?
I think we'll do that as part of the bylaws. We'll kind of take a look at everything we've done, and we can deliver a larger report. I hope, I don't want to commit myself to a timeline yet, but I will.
No, no, no. And it was not trying to pressure you into anything like that either, but I think, I thought this was the first year, but you tend to lose track of when things started. We talk about them before they ever begin, and so just not really certain. But, you know, I think we were all very supportive of the work that College Council would do and bring back to us, and that form of communication. So it would be nice to hear as you move forward, some sort of evaluation, too, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. What does shared governance mean to you?
Shared governance is making sure that every- Shared governance is making sure that every voice has a place in the room, and everybody gets a chance to speak, and ideas are explored as much as they can be. I don't know, kind of on the spot with that one. So I honestly believe that the work of the College Counsel is important in that we do have that voice, we do have the ability to make a recommendation to the board on some things, should they come up to us. We will have some recommendations on communication coming forward, I think. And that would be the result of voices from Staff Counsel coming up to College Counsel, and then all of us in that group having the opportunity to explore communication as well.
You know, I'd like to take credit for your presence here, but that'd be a little bit like Bill Clinton taking credit for crime rate in the 90s, you know? So Dr. Bound has chosen to include you, and I think that's a wise decision to let all voices be heard, and I'd like to commend, and just note, for any relevant record, he's done that.
Yeah.
And we had a long discussion yesterday about shared governance and collegial steering, so I didn't mean to catch you.
No, it's okay.
I do value your input, and that's why I asked you. Decisions are made by those who show up, so it's important that we talk when we show up, so.
Exactly.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Have a good weekend.
You too.
Okay, so that concludes the board reports section.
What happened?
Clapping, I don't know what.
The American way.
Is there a Jason Arnett size hole now? The next item on our agenda is the committee reports and recommendations, and the first item is the Audit Committee Report that I shall turn over to Trustee Ingram, who graciously took the meeting for me last week.
And you're more than welcome to clap. Just want to open that up. The Audit Committee met on Wednesday, May 3, 2023. The full report is on page 1 and 2 of the board packet. We did have an external audit update. Chester Moyer and Corey Robinson from Irvin Brown presented an engagement timeline and audit scope for the financial audit, single audit, foundation audit, and tax work. Mr. Moyer and Mr. Robinson request that the board members bring questions or concerns related to fraud risk to their attention prior to or during the audit. I do have contact information from them, and Dr. Bound, I would just ask that maybe we get that out to...
I will include that in my weekly update?
Perfect, that would be great, because I didn't find it in the report, and I had indicated that we had that information, so thank you for doing that. Audit presented recent activities included bookstore operations and controls audit. Internal audit is wrapping up the audit of the JCC bookstore. They will be observing final processes and completing detailed testing over the next couple of weeks. The co-source agreement was finalized, and internal audit will be meeting with four of us on May 16. A senior auditor position was posted on April 27. Tandem Cyber is completing a GLBA risk assessment. They reviewed and tested controls for the BURSSAR, admissions, and registrar. They are expected to provide a report of their findings the week of May 8. Audit recommendations update included internal audit and IT gave updates on outstanding issues from prior audits. Findings related to the 2020 athletics audit, 2022 IT incident management, and 2022 travel were all closed. The only remaining findings are related to the firearms audit. The police department should have action plans completed by August of this year. The annual ethics benchmark report was presented, and an update on ethics complaints was also provided. The next Audit Committee meeting will be in August of 2023, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Trustee.
You're welcome.
And thank you for taking that meeting. Any questions for Trustee Ingram on the Audit Committee? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is a report for the Board Governance Committee by Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Governance Committee met on Wednesday, May 3, in the Hugh W. Spear Board Room right here. Four policies were reviewed, which can be found on pages 4 through 15 of your board packet. I am going to take just a minute to name them in more specificity to make sure we all know which ones they are. So the Board Responsibilities Policy, 110. The Number and Selection of Trustees Policy, 111.01. And the Special Meetings of the Board Operating Procedure, 112.01, were all policies that we discussed and were the ones we revised just a few months ago when we met, so there are really no changes to those. But we did have a discussion about the Ethics Policy, 114.02, had a pretty robust discussion. Trustee Musel, if I botch this summary, please feel free to jump in, but we are trying to pair together the Conflicts of Interest Policy, so we have employees, including the executive leadership, who have to adhere to Conflicts of Interest Policy, and as you know, we all sign each year the Conflicts of Interest Form. And what we're trying to do is make sure that those two policies match better and have a better fit for adhering to what we would ask of an employee, and that will be a little bit of a change. So the committee went ahead and pushed that to be discussed in the next meeting when the college policy for employees will be discussed. That way we can kind of see them side by side, our own policy, and I say that right? I did?
I think the goal is to make sure that executive leadership and the board is subject to the same level of conflict of interest as employees are, so to bring them back up together. And I think the employee one will come back through...
It will likely come back through the Employee Engagement and Development Committee.
Right.
And I don't anticipate, unless you all want it to occur, that the Code of Ethics Policy that you reviewed would come back through Board Governance unless, you know, additional changes are made.
Okay. So I just wanted you all to know that, because these are the policies that affect us as a board. So the other thing was, we discussed the onboarding process of new trustees, talked about some revisions, and the previously used onboarding plan from 2021, 2022 was reviewed, which affects several of you, and input was provided on suggested updates to be used for the next onboarding after next year's election. Lastly, we discussed the presidential review process, which we will be doing the first of a two-part review process tonight for the president, and we're adding in these two executive sessions to be able to kind of book in the review process better and better inform us as we review the president each year. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman?
Any questions for Trustee Smith Everett?
Well, just based upon what you said as far as that policy not coming back through Board Governance, will it go through management, or is it just a done deal at this point?
So the 431, the Conflicts of Interest Policy that employees are subject to will go through a committee. This one, which applies to the board as well as designated officers who are other employees of the college, has gone through the Board Governance Committee, and if there are no additional changes, it was my understanding that the goal was just to hold it until, so that they could both come to the board, the full board, at the same time.
Perfect, okay. Yeah, just confused me.
It is confusing.
Any other questions, comments for Trustee Smith Everett? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is a report for Collegial Steering, and I will note that we did meet yesterday in the Lidl Conference Room, and we talked about shared governance and other issues with various members who were there, including Trustee Ingram and I, Dr. Bound, and Pam Vassar, including Andrea Vu, Brett Cooper, and I'm blanking on the names of the other two people.
Andrew Lewis and Justin Deng.
Yes, thank you so much. So it was a lively and spirited discussion that I have invited numerous times, and that concludes my report. Inviting people to ask questions and they don't, seeing none.
I could add something to that, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, yes, please.
Well, I think we had also some comments about proctoring, online proctoring, and I thought that was really interesting too, and an important thing to have discussed, so I just wanted to bring that up, that was brought up to us, so thank you.
And the difficulty of administering online tests and the restrictions of not being able to scan a room with a camera is it's an unreasonable search.
Right.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. Anything else, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is the Inclusion and Belonging Committee and a report by Trustee Ratan.
The Inclusion and Belonging Committee met on Wednesday, May 3, in the Hugh Spear Board Room. Our meeting opened with two representatives from the Student Nursing Association who discussed the SNA activities that have enriched their JCC experience. One highlight is that the SNA offers a mentorship program regardless of whether the student is in the association, and for second-year students that support your first-year students. And this has helped foster inclusion and belonging in the nursing group. Next, Stacy McDaniel, who's the Executive Director of the Midwest Trust Center, discussed the 2023-2024 season and how its programming and other activities support inclusion and belonging on campus and in our community. I'd encourage everyone to go out and look at the programming, and she tries to make sure there's something for everyone. Natalie Allman Byers, the Director of Institutional Planning and Research, presented benchmarking data that was focused on male student enrollment demographics and outcomes, and that data was compared with our peer institutions from around the country. To close, Kate Allen, the Vice President for College Advancement and Government Affairs, reported that the position, the search for Executive Director for Inclusion and Belonging has concluded, and our candidate will be on campus in July. I'm not sure if, I saw the announcement come out today.
Yes.
Would you like to?
The person who accepted the position?
Yes. Marquise Harris.
Yes.
Who will be joining us from the Olathe Public Schools.
Thank you.
Fine candidate.
Thanks to the committee that conducted the search and made the decision. The next Inclusion and Belonging Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 7, at 11:00 a.m. in this boardroom. Thank you, I'm done.
Any questions?
We don't know where we're done with this boardroom, actually.
Pardon?
The last day we're going to be in this boardroom.
August?
Is it August?
So the question is from a timing standpoint, so is August, September timeframe, it's going to depend a lot, right? Rachel, jump in. A lot will depend on the timing of Phase 1, and when that's completed and ready to switch over to Phase 2, but we'll be ready to go August, September timeframe. Yes? And I'm getting the nod from Tom Hall, so. Can we get a help demolish?
I was gonna say, is Trustee Musel wanting Miss Sledgehammer?
Yes.
I thought Musel volunteered.
I mean, Hamlet, sorry.
Dr. Shelley Allen was also hired?
Yes, that is correct.
Accepted the position of Student Success, Vice President of Student Success?
That's correct. That'd be Ms., she is ABD, that was a misprint on my part. She's not yet finished.
I just read what's on the prompt.
Yep.
Thank you, but she's from the Des Moines area?
That is correct.
Okay, very exciting. And then those positions will both report to you, Dr. McLeod, is that right?
They will.
Okay.
Remind me what ABD means. You just told me the other day, and I can't remember. All but dissertation, so she's completed all the coursework but has never completed the dissertation step for the degree. So most of us up here are MBDs.
Never.
Mostly, but no.
Okay. Any other questions for the Inclusion and Belonging Committee? Thank you to the Inclusion and Belonging Committee. The next item on our agenda is the Management and Finance Committee report by the man, the myth, and the legend, Trustee Musel.
Thank you so much. Pages 19 through 24 of our board packet is the Management and Finance Committee meeting. We met on May 3 on Committee Day at 8:30 in the morning and concluded about an hour later. The bulk of the program was engaged in our sustainability efforts with Dr. Jay Antle, professor of history and executive director of the Center for Sustainability, making his annual presentation, I think it's become annual now, as to all of our sustainability efforts, the costs, the return on investment to the extent it can be calculated, which is not an easy task, progress that we've made on things like diversion from the landfill, which is very impressive, and lower electric usage on campus despite the addition of buildings because of efficiency that we've built in through LEDs and otherwise, the advantages of our solar arrays that we have had in place and that we are planning to put in place, our contracting with Evergy for wind-generated energy, so we are lowering the college's carbon footprint through that. You have the materials in the Management and Finance Committee materials for the Committee Day. I would urge you to go back and look at those and look at the, it was only 32 pages. I accused Jay of having a 52-page PowerPoint, I think it was about 30, but they're very helpful. They give very detailed information about what we've avoided in electrical costs, what it's cost us to avoid those, so that we have somewhat of a net that you can demonstrate to people that whatever sustainability or environmental sensitivity might mean in terms of the college, we've been leaders, and we've also done it in a way that has been economically beneficial to the college and to taxpayers. And I think we've set a culture through Jay and his team and faculty and staff on campus and students that will continue that progress. As he mentioned, I think there's a diminishing rate of return on some of these things where you can't continue to make the strides that we'd like to make. He also mentioned the bird study, which is another effort that was grassroots, and at the time, I have to admit, I thought it was maybe a little silly, but it didn't cost really anything. It involved grassroots folks, and we are killing fewer birds simply by putting, not simply by, by researching and understanding where to put graphics on windows so birds know not to fly into them. So I would urge you to go back and review those if you have any interest in our sustainability efforts. The second thing was a budget update by Janelle Vogler, Vice President and CFO. We had our budget workshop at the April Board Meeting. She presented updates on that, including in the packet, updated information responsive to questions from our budget workshop, and I think, Dr. Bound, are we going to have an update on that today?
We will.
Okay.
You ready?
Yep.
All right, then I'd like to invite Vice President and Chief Financial Officer, Janelle Vogler, to come up and walk us through the overview of the budget before you're asked to formally consider the budget.
I have a question about birds, though.
You want to ask one? Yep.
No, just later.
Okay. So you don't urge?
I will not.
Okay.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. So those of you that were in attendance at the Management and Finance Committee, this is very similar information. We just felt it was important to present it to you tonight for you and the audience and those on our viewing audience to have some, just some overall information on the budget that we're about to recommend. So we're here tonight to make the recommendation to you to approve the management budget, and this gives the college authority to spend starting July 1 until we get to our legal budget in the fall. So if I could just walk you through some key points that are in this year's proposed management budget. We did talk about it, as Trustee Musel said, at the Budget Workshop on April 20. We feel this budget balances the needs of the taxpayers and the students while investing in our employees, while investing in the future. Some key features of the budget include, it reduces our mil levy by one-half mil, which is the fifth mil levy reduction in the past six years. This saves the taxpayers approximately $7 million. After last year, when we increased our tuition by 3, 4, and 5 credit hour by residency, this year there's no recommended increase in tuition. We are increasing the College Now grant in the general fund by 50,000, so to a total of 250,000, which further supports access and affordability for our Johnson County resident high school students. Provides for a 2.75 compensation increase for our faculty and staff. It allows us to make additional investments in our employees by an allocation of $1.8 million in the general fund for the job architecture project. It funds over $370,000 in strategic plan initiatives. And finally, it maintains the college's reserve levels, which are important for our financial health and the strong foundations that we've enjoyed. So this is an overview, a very high-level overview of that budget, and it is what is in the recommendation. And as you can see, it's revenue and expenses are... in the recommendation. And as you can see, it's revenue and expenses are roughly neutral, just about 179 million in revenues and expenses. We've talked about this a couple of times, but you'll notice last year's budget was a budgeted use of reserves of around 14 and a half million for that science lab project that we've been working on. This year, it's a balanced budget. And just a couple words on our final steps. We talked about it May 3rd at the Management and Finance Committee. So here we are tonight at the board meeting, asking for a recommendation for approval to adopt that management budget. And then again, in the fall, we will adopt the legal budget in September. And I believe that date is in later in the packet for approval for meeting dates. And then a couple other things we wanted to bring up. At the Budget Workshop, there was some additional information that was requested, and I wanted to show you that. So this is the general fund revenue by source, a 10-year look. This is the same as what was in the Budget Workshop book. We've added a data table, so you can see the actual numbers as well as the percentages on the graph that were shown. I can't go back to any of these. And the second is similar information on our expense history, also showing the data table, and then separating out salaries and benefits into their own line for a little more clarity on that. And then the last thing that was requested was a look at all the Kansas Community Colleges and their mill levy history. So we've got that there for you. It's actually 22 years of data that we get from the Kansas Association of Community College Business Officers information. So you can see that presented. And that information is really incomplete without looking also at the assessed valuation of those same community colleges to get an idea of how those two pieces of information work together. So with that, let me see if there's any questions I can answer.
Trustee Hamel.
Sure. Thank you. So here on one of the first slides, we're talking about it reduces the mill levy by 0.5, and it saves taxpayers $7 million. I'm not sure if I'm quite happy with that wording. We are asking another 5.8 million, which we got from the previous year. So we're looking at a 5% tax increase across?
Yes.
To get the 5.8 million.
Yes, that's correct.
What, any other questions for Janelle? What, at what rate or how are we accounting for inflation?
Inflation. Not quite sure how to answer that. Inflation in our budget with the reg-
Well, I sat in a meeting yesterday, which a faculty member told me they were looking at a 6% pay cut because it only goes up 0.2, 0.75% compensation increase while we had 9% inflation last year.
Right.
So I'm not sure I'm happy about a 5.5 mil cut and giving away $7 million when we're going to have an inflationary crisis on our hands in the years to come. I can't imagine that's a surprise to anybody that's listened to me talk about it before. So I'm just asking, how are we accounting for inflation in the broader economy within Johnson County and, yes, certainly within our budget as we have seen costs for supplies go up in the past two years?
So I'll, to speak to our internal budget on supply, every budget, every line item in the budget, each department looks at and predicts what they're going to need to do business. So we do account for that in the supplies, I'm sorry, in the current operating and grants line on our budget. If you're talking about employee salaries, it is that 0.75%. Also, I would like to remind you that we are working on that job architecture project, and we've got the money budgeted for that as well, and how that plays into individual salaries.
And just to clarify, what I said is exactly correct. We don't make an across-the-board inflationary increase in our budgeting process. And then just a reminder that the 2.75% compensation increase is what was negotiated between the Board and the Faculty Association in 2021.
I understand. Any other way we've accounted for inflation?
One of the things that I'm looking at is the salaries and benefits went up 6% from '23 to '24. I don't know exactly what all we're accounting for in that, because obviously the-
I mean, in addition to the 2.75% increase in the job architecture funding, we do have some estimated increases in cost of employee benefits built in there as well. So working with our HR department, we've made some assumptions around medical renewals, dental cost increases, and those sorts of things are factored in as well.
If I remember correctly, from when I was on HR Committee, which I served during COVID, was the first time we had ever experienced benefit, not benefit reduction, I'm sorry, but the cost of benefit reduction. And then immediately after that following year, the costs spiked in the teens and higher. And so then you had, then it looks like, you know, our costs plateaued, but the spike is really accounting for two-plus years of people not going to the doctor and then having built-up issues which then cost us because we're paying for premiums and such that the market has had to adjust for, so.
But again, in our budgeting process, we don't just apply a 7% or 8% inflationary increase across the board. We work with 120, 130 budget administrators across campus to try to really build the budgets out at the line item level.
Any other questions for Vice President Vogler?
With that, I would, the very supportive recommendation of the entire Management and Finance Committee, that was me that day, is that we recommend that we approve the management budget as presented here, and if I get a second, I will make a couple comments.
Second?
I, we went through this in the Budget Workshop, and we looked at it again, and I really appreciate, Janelle, you and your team, Rachel, giving some more information as was requested at the Budget Workshop. I think it's important that when we look at a statewide view of this from the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees or otherwise, if you look at the assessed, or the mill levies at other community colleges, and they're 40 mils, or 35 mils, or 30 mils, and ours is going to go down to 8.5 because this county is blessed, in part because this-
8.1.
8.1, in part blessings because the work this college does to help the economic development of this county. But I think this is a sound budget. My comment I made at the Budget Workshop and I made at the Management and Finance Committee is, my motion today is to approve this as presented. We will have a formal budget public hearing in September, and by that time, I have asked the administration to let us know, what did the state give us in new money that is base budget money? So if it's built into the base, it's not a one-time $2.5 million grant for the CDL facility, but it's intended to be ongoing money. And to the extent we get ongoing money above what we had predicted in the budget, my goal will be to convince four of you, or six of you, three of you, I guess, to get a majority, but six of you to get a consensus, that we ought to use that state money to lower the mill levy a little more so that our local taxpayers pay less, and as the state finally steps up a little bit more toward what Trustee Smith Everett has noted was supposed to be a 1/3, 1/3, 1/3, and the state's about 15% now. So that's my only comment. And I know it comes as no surprise to Rachel and Janelle, or Dr. Bowden, what I'm thinking on that. But I think we need, we should support this, and we should pass this, and then we'll do the final legal budget in September.
Trustee Hamel.
Because technically, if I remember correctly too, and please correct me, but our vote tonight just really allows you to continue to spend until we get to that legal formality. Is that correct?
Yes. And we need a budget to load into our accounting system so that we can start payroll processes and all of those things to effective on July 1.
So I wasn't wrong?
You're right.
Okay. Well, that was helpful for me in the past years to just kind of-
Sure.
-think about that in terms, and then, no, we still have opportunity.
To amend later. Yes.
When are we looking at actually making that final decision on the, what month are we doing that on?
We do that in September.
September.
We do it in September.
It'll be at the September Board Meeting. The revenue-neutral rate legislation requires that that hearing happens between August 20th and September 20th annually. So this year, the way the calendar works out, it'll be at the September Board.
And if I may, I'd like to make a couple of comments as well.
Trustee.
I do think that the difference from last budget, last year's to this one, is done very well. I really appreciate kind of where we're looking and what this looks like. And the 5%, again, I would love to go a little lower, but it does seem reasonable in the times we're in. And we were talking about inflation rates, but there's a lot of numbers that I don't think we're really looking at the long-term scope of these things, and those are important to look at as well. And so a lot of these ones go from 2015 to 2024. And so what we were saying, we brought in $80 million in 2015 for property taxes, and now we're looking at 121. That's over a 50% increase in basically in our inflation just here on the college, what we're trying to bring in. And during that time period, inflation rate was only 28% over that time period. So we're significantly going above what inflation is with our taxes. And I'm not saying that this is the wrong call exactly for this one, but overall, I think that's something we should be looking at, paying attention to those, our whole trend as a whole. So and also, same time period, we've lost about 20% of our students, or these credit hours are full-time equivalent students, has gone down 20% over that exact same time period. So what we've lost, you know, 20% of our credit-seeking hours, our budget, our revenue from taxes has gone up 50%. So I think those are two numbers we should also be looking at and thinking about as well.
Any other comments?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions here? I'll note that it's my understanding that this is essentially, we're approving the guidelines. We've already approved the guidelines, but we're locking in a budget that will essentially form the formal budget, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'll probably be voting no. I plan to sit here for a while. I'm not sure how much longer, but I'm trying to protect you all, and to the extent that, you know, you want to do what you think is best, that's fine. But I sit here, and this inflation thing is going to be a massive problem. It's going to dominate the presidential election next year. It's going to, it's already an issue in the world of finance. So I would prefer that we leave the mill alone and keep the money to support our faculty, to support our staff and administration so that they have the money they need to combat this problem. And we've already got other issues that I'm not inclined to go into right now, but I would prefer not to do this, and I'll be voting no.
Want to make sure, you said lock in, and for anybody watching, this doesn't lock in the budget until we do the legal budget with a public hearing after notice sent by the county to every taxpayer in the county saying Johnson County Community College is going above the revenue-neutral rate, which probably every other taxing jurisdiction will as well. So we're not, we're giving our staff the authority to go enter contracts and things, but we could change it all in September. Hopefully, if we change it, we're tweaking it and not changing it wholesale. And I understand where you're coming from, Lee, in the inflation part, but I just don't think, at a time when you have good reserves and good revenues, you should keep resources when you could reduce property tax burden on people. I fully understand that you might have to raise them at some point. You might have to raise the mill levy, and nobody really wants to do that, and I've been in here once when we did it. So I-
Couple times, actually.
No, I don't want to let, I don't want to scare us off from reducing the mill levy on voters or on citizens by the notion that someday in the future, because of inflation or other things, we might have to increase it. I think you give it back when you have it.
Anything else?
I don't have anything more. Thank you.
I appreciate you, and I think you have two years, two cycles on me, so you have more experience than I do, but this is-
Mr. Chair.
Oh, sure, go ahead. Trustee Reel?
I just want to comment briefly, and I want to, I guess, measure my words so that I'm accurately conveying my thoughts. I'll be voting yes, but I do share the concern that our assessed valuation right now is artificially elevated. I have to think that it's going to right-size. You know, housing values can't stay where they are. We've seen that happen before. And to echo what Trustee Musil just referenced, I think we need to be prepared that if the assessed valuation right sizes, then we may have to go back and raise that mill levy back up. And as long as the public and we are prepared to make that decision, then maybe it makes sense to lower it now. You know, certainly, the most important, one of the most important things we do as a board is to be good stewards of taxpayers' money, and at the same time, good stewards of our students' tuition money. And in a budget where we can lower the tax burden or reduce the tax burden and not raise tuition, that's a win-win. But I think we have to be prepared that we're living in very uncertain times. The state could give us money, what the state giveth, the state can taketh away. And so we just have to be prepared. I often hear how great it is when we lower the mill levy, and oh, my gosh, don't ever raise the mill levy. And I just think we have to be realistic that that may be in our future if we lower it now.
I appreciate your comments. I share your concern. And one of the things that I just don't know, and I say this to Dr. Bowden all the time, like, there's just some things I don't know, and I don't, like, the politics of this county have changed. The politics of the state are perhaps changing. And I don't know how that's going to go. I don't know if commercial real estate is bottomed out or is dramatically falling. I don't know how that affects residential real estate. I just don't know. And I'm not trying to be a doomsayer. I am legitimately saying to this board, and as a fiduciary, I think that it makes sense, my instinct is just hold on to money. And you can call me a tax and spend liberal, and I don't care. I mean, my duty is to these students and this faculty, and someone's got to say it. So I appreciate Trustee Musil's comment that, and I believe him when he says he probably would raise the mill when needed. What I'm working to avoid is a bloody political fight that we're raising taxes in a time that historically makes sense to get the revenue and the stimulus that you need when you need it, but it's always a fight to get it. So if we have it, I'd rather just hold on to it. You know, I haven't led any active campaign to dismantle the budget here, but in 10 years, the budget we approve now typically winds up being what stands, with minor tweaks comes to term. Could we change the whole thing theoretically? Do we? Hardly ever. And so that's my concern. And so I'm working to signal to the administration and frankly, provide them cover that, and I understand Trustee Hamel's position, I just disagree. I think that we need the money, our teachers need to be paid, our professors. It's worse in the court system, where they recently got raises, but the rate that the staff and the judges have been paid has been terrible over the last 10 years. So, you know, if you want a civil society to function, then we need the money to do it, and it begins here, and it's one of the reasons why I've sat here and continue to sit here, because we need to properly fund education. And I'm not really trying to have a battle royale here. I'm just saying, I don't agree with what's being done, and nor have I actively worked to undermine the administration and its budget. So I'm just communicating it, anticipating frankly, in the next two or three years, that I can, I don't want to sit here and say I told you so, but when it comes time for raising that mill levy, you know, I'll have to lead that fight. That'll probably be me leading that bout, right? So I appreciate your comments. I appreciate everyone's work. I know it's done in good faith. I know it's an interesting and difficult political time. I own property in this county, and it's expensive. So I'm not immune or unaware of the situation. I am just saying, my first job is to these students and to protect the assets and resources of this college as the statute calls for. So that's what I'm doing. Any other questions or comments now that I'll be quiet?
Mr. Chairman, can I call the motion to question?
I think you may, yes. The motion has been moved by Trustee Musil and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Trustee Ratan?
As Dr. Bowden and I talked, he issued a challenge for departments to reduce by 10%. And in our one-on-one, many of the departments did. And so I would like to actually thank all the departments for looking through the haystack, trying to find that needle, trying to find ways to reduce. And the result is a lower budget than last year. So thanks to everyone for their work.
A lower budget than last year. Thank you for saying that. Sorry to talk over you. And then also that the budget comes in under budget, and I think that he is to be commended for that. And I'm sorry to interrupt you.
You didn't interrupt me at all. You didn't interrupt me at all. I think just to caution, what drove down the budget overall, though, was related to capital expense, and employees were very helpful in looking at ways that they can trim operating budgets so that we could spend operating dollars in other priority ways. So, the operating budget is still up over last year's budget, but it was, it was a great deal of work that's happened, as there always is in any budget process. But the reason for the fundamental decrease in the budget is we're spending less on capital next year than we have budgeted for this year, and it's related to the science projects.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Let me say one more thing. I honestly think this community, this conversation has been absolutely great, and again, I want to reiterate how great this budget was compared to last year, and I don't, it's hard to agree to really say that when I haven't been through all of, every single year of this, but I can definitely tell work was put in here to try to low it, lower it as much as you possibly could, especially during a time where you're seeing inflation, as Dawn was talking about, the cuts made there. I really appreciate that we're looking at, we're going to see extra revenue coming in here. I think I'm going to vote for this. This was a really tough one for me, but I mean, this is preliminary, we can talk about it further. We obviously need to get this thing, get something done. And again, I can, I can easily see that there's a lot of work put to this, to really try to trim everything you possibly could out. So, I want to thank everybody for their hard work on that as well, so.
Any, thank you for that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Aye, passes, six to one. Trustee Musial.
Last item, action item from the Management and Finance Committee budget is a bid package for 2020, during the next school year, active learning classroom renovations. That bid package resulted in the low bid of GPS KC of $338,174, and it's a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the board accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the low bid for GPS KC for active learning classrooms renovation in the amount of $338,174, with an additional 10% contingency of $33,817.40 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure amount of $371,991.40, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion has been made by Trustee Musial and seconded by Trustee Ingram. Any discussion on this? Trustee Hamel.
Thank you. So, we've already spent 2/3 of a million dollars on the electronics and technology for this, these three classrooms, and we're spending another $30 million for, right at a million dollars, I believe, for these three smart classrooms, and obviously, there's some backup technology we also need in another electric closet as well, we're updating. But basically, for three classrooms, we're spending a million dollars, and I've had similar discussion, these are wants, these are not needs. And obviously, the last conversation, that last vote was very difficult, I think, for everybody here, exactly, was this the right thing? Should we raise, should we lower, exactly where we need to be with that $5.8 million raise? And we're looking at a million dollars, we're spending, that again, we're doing a want instead of a need, and these are one of those times where maybe we need to be more careful. Not only is inflation going to affect the college, and we should be really cognizant of that, and be concerned by making sure we're taking care of our faculty, our teachers, our students, but we also have the taxpayers to consider as well, and trying to figure out that perfect balance is obviously difficult, and since we already spent our 2/3 of a million dollars, I think it's hard to say no to this, obviously. But again, next time this comes around, I would like, I'd be, next year, when we look at saying the same vote on some more smart classrooms that'll be coming up, I really think we should take a pause during this time period until we're in a much more comfortable place to buy our wants, so.
Thank you for that input. Trustee.
I have a question. Mark, I know that we approved a bid package last month for about the 2/3 of a million dollars you talked about for technology. I don't think that was only for three active learning classrooms, and I don't know if somebody here could help us with that.
There, that was a, there were some components of some other projects, because the single source that you're referring to was Fordell, and so there were some other purchases related to our information services department that were included in that, in last month's vote.
I thought that was for, for more uses than just three active learning classrooms, although your point, your point is well taken. I think if, if that's something we want to look at, then we need to change our, what has been our strategy for multiple years, which is to increase the number of active learning classrooms. If we don't think we can afford that or should afford that now, then that's a budget priority that we ought to ask the administration to look at as they go forward. That has been something we have supported and stayed behind, and I think from a pedagogy standpoint, it's something people want and like in the, in the classrooms that we've done. But I've always wondered how we measure the impact of those enhancements, because they're not cheap. And I think last, last month, Dr. McLeod indicated there's a limited number of classrooms we're going to do this to, because it has to be the right classroom setup to do it. But that, that is one thing, and I appreciate, Mark, because whenever we talk about saving money, when, I think I'll just look, 77% of our operating budget is people. So, it's not easy to find savings on the people's side without making a lot of people nervous, and sometimes you have to do that. So, active learning classrooms may be something where we need a, a better evaluation of, are they working and are they a want or a need? I, I don't know the answer to that today, but I think this bid follows what we've been doing and what we've asked our administration to do. If we review that, then we should review it.
If I could just ask clarifying question, I guess, the comment, Trustee Hamel, that you said, so we can afford it in better times, I guess, I'm need, to me, this current time, which is the property values are up, and we have the ability to do it, is a better time than when it's a really lean time and our, all of our, the thing about the budgeting process is you're a year ahead and you're not aligned up with the economy, and so, it doesn't always mesh, because the taxes come in and we can spend it for the next year, but it's, you know, what I'm feeling when I go to the grocery store, don't line up. So if I could have clarification in terms of what you're thinking of, what is the ideal scenario? And then my next question is to Dr. McLeod or someone to remind us of what these classrooms are that we are talking about tonight.
Sure. So I'll say, the fact that we've had 50, we've increased our budget 50% in an inflationary period of 28%, to me, that was an overstep on our part. And again, I wasn't here for everything, so it's hard for me to go back and criticize too much, but just looking at the math, we've almost doubled the inflationary rate for our budget from $80 million to $120 million, and during that time period, we've lost 20% of our credit hours. So, those things don't really match up. And while this budget itself, looking at from last year to this year, looks pretty good, I mean, it's clearly, I can tell that work was done to try to trim out anything you possibly can, maybe even some things that maybe even shouldn't have been, or you wish you could, wouldn't have to, let's say that. But if we don't look at these times when it is difficult for our taxpayers that have been so generous and love our college, and, you know, you can talk about anybody in the community, people love Johns County Community College, whether you go there, or your nephew goes there, or your niece, or whoever, you know, this college is doing amazing, wonderful things, and when we lean on our public on a regular basis, and we go above the inflationary rate, asking them for raises, I think at times like this, when we're, when we are uncertain, you mean, maybe the housing prices do fall, we're looking at raising mill rates, maybe inflationary, you know, gets so bad with inflation, we have to raise mill, these things come up. So during this time period, we are looking at a want, and one of the things that, when we were talking about these smart classrooms last year, I believe about a quarter of our classrooms are smart classrooms, they're definitely used almost completely fully to the max we possibly can use them. They are great, and they're wonderful. I've taken tours, and I know Lee was at one of the tours I did, and I believe another trustee was there with me as well. It's amazing technology. I'm glad that our students get to use these things, and again, if we have somebody going through here, taking, getting their associates or moving on, they're going to get a plenty of chance to experience this technology, help them with their career, you know, probably even have a better experience here, technology, than they will even in their first job, in my experience. So again, it's great we have these things, but I think sometimes we got to slow down on some of these wants, is all I'm saying, so sorry.
So, to, so just to go back, it seems like it's important to you that we only spend within the means of what inflation is doing. Does that seem right? Anything outside of that is not, you're not comfortable with?
Not necessarily. I think it's, you got to take it more carefully than that. I don't think there's always a, always a right answer for everything, and you can put a formula in, and it's always a formula. I think that as being, as being trained in accounting, having an accounting degree, management by accounting is not a good thing to do as well. They'll look at the bottom line, they'll make a decision, and they don't realize how it's affecting the future. I've seen that happen, and I fought back against when accountants are trying to manage everything from an accounting position. It's not all about the dollar, but the dollar is important. I'm trying to figure out that right balance, and right now, again, Lee's concerns are very valid. I totally see where Lee's coming from as well, as well, and I know I have a very opposite viewpoint in this moment, but again, you go back to Melody and Greg, when we basically control whatever we want to with the purse, you know, we can decide if we want to raise taxes or lower taxes every single year. I think we can figure out, you know, we can be generous when we can be generous, and if the public is generous, when they can be generous, we try to figure out how to balance that in the right years. And so again, I just want to be really careful, especially during these time periods.
And then, Mr. Chairman, my follow-up was about the, if we could get a quick refresher on what the active learning classroom is, why it's so expensive, how they're utilized.
I think, do we have a survey out right now on active learning classrooms? Is that?
Not currently. We, we do a regular usage survey of them.
We do have one out currently.
Okay.
Yeah, it's about ready to wrap up.
Our active learning classrooms are a way in which we increase and shift the pedagogy of the institution. They are rooms that are structured in such a way that the furniture is both movable and flexible, that there are multiple monitors and controllers in the room, which allow us to do projects for project-based learning, group work for students. It allows us to position in some of the rooms, a student with low vision anywhere within the classroom, and still allow them to be able to see a monitor, to see what is going on at the front of the classroom, and be able to read and understand within appropriate parameters for visual learning as well. Some of these rooms come with laptop carts, which allow students who maybe do not have anything beyond a cell phone with them, to be able to participate in electronic projects, to connect to the pedagogy that is being deployed in the classroom for any multitude of things.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Yes.
My internet is down. Pedagogy means what?
Pedagogy is the way in which a learner is being taught. Pedagogy in particular is about the teaching of younger learners or newer learners.
Right.
Whereas andragogy would be for older learners or folks who already have a set of skills that you are adding on to.
And many of our students, I mean, the myth for those watching, is that everybody in this county is loaded, right?
Yes.
And many of us that did go here were not. I grew up in the trailer on the south side of Lawrence. So some of our students maybe don't have the best cell phones, as our mission is to meet the lowest, last, least, and last students who need our help, right? So this, this in many ways is their, their greatest exposure to electronics and electronic learning.
Yes.
That's my understanding.
In many ways it is, and, and for folks who, who often think of the cell phone as kind of a do-everything tool, a cell phone is not an appropriate tool for academic progress. It does not, it does not allow the bandwidth, the usage, the space, the writing of a, of a 25-page paper on a cell phone is a torturous thing to assume anybody could do. And so, beyond just that, in many of our fields, we do, and I think that the trustee is correct, we do have cutting-edge technology, and in some cases, it is better than what folks will experience when they get their first job. But that is actually our goal, is to make sure that our students are prepared at the cutting edge and are ready to lead when they step into the field, not just appear at the lowest rung and, and hope to catch on someplace where they can get better access.
I would add on that, I mean, coming from a district where my own children go, they've had a device since kindergarten.
Yeah.
All year long, and all learning is, 50% of the day is through a device with online learning. So then, to come to a college where that isn't the setup, is actually moving backwards for them. I would also counter that, I think everybody's first job is wildly different, but my husband built a $21 million lab and hires people right out of community college and college to be on the lab bench, that he expects to be able to serve in a facility that is cutting-edge and is what, what we will see now in our new building, but certainly was not the science labs that our students were coming from. Again, coming from public ed, they were going backwards coming here to much, much less equal facilities, facilities with much less to offer. So I just wanted to make the argument that everybody's first job is, of course, wildly different, but the corporate world has taken off in a way that if you're not in it, may not experience that everybody gets a laptop now when you go to work. I mean, you're issued a cutting-edge Mac two-screen thing in a lot of industries where our students need to have those experiences, so that when they do get that job, they go, oh, yeah, I've, I've been on these, I know how to do this, I can do it with the projectors or the other things. Are there particular fields that these classrooms serve, or particular?
There is active learning in pretty much every division in the college, and it depends, how it is deployed depends upon what field. Everything from the mannequins in the virtual hospital, to the virtual reality simulation for fire science and EMS, to be able to go into trauma spots, to remove folks, to the multiple-screen lab that we use for accounting, to do multiple business-based projects simultaneously for, for groups of students during our accounting one, two, and three courses. There are any number of approaches that reach into every division of academics.
These would not just affect one?
No.
Thank you.
These funds actually have done things, not just within the standard classroom, but even in, in the year in which the active learning funding helped fund the, the Oral Health on Wheels classroom and its complete refurbishment, so that the students in dental hygiene are still able to go out and, and take the O-How truck out into the community to do free oral health to indigent citizens, to be able to get that experience with different levels of oral care, to make sure that they are prepared when they go out into, into the workforce. So, that money has done a multitude of things over the years.
Trustee Reel.
Just briefly, because we've been talking about this for quite some time, but one of the things I love about this college is that we have a culture of continuous improvement. And I will say that I took my first class on this campus in 1986 as part of the Police Academy. That's one of the rooms that we're talking about here. At that time, the Police Academy, the entire Police Academy, was one room upstairs from where we're sitting right now. In 2001, I had the privilege of helping to build that building that's over there, and that's the kind of culture of continuous improvement that I'm so glad we're not just budgeting to, to account for inflation and nothing more, because we have the opportunity to offer our community and our students the best from year to year, and just continue to get better. And when I look back on what this campus was, and, don't get me wrong, I had a great education in 1986, but when I look at the changes that have happened in those years, I'm really glad that we have a culture of continuous improvement, and that our citizens are willing to help fund that. And so, maybe I've misunderstood the conversation, but that's my thought.
No, that's one of the reasons I wanted you to sit there, because you have that knowledge, you have that institutional knowledge and experience.
That just means I'm old.
No, I went to law school with you, you're not that old. I will say to the gentleman, Vice President, thank you for the questions. I didn't mean to be so intense, I was just really lobbing softballs at you, and I wanted to show Trustee Hamel that I've got, there's no, there's no notepad in there, I've got four or five notepads here, and so, I find my brain actually works better if I go to notepads. I do, and I am addicted to these devices, and I treasure your input, I do, because I think we need to be prepared to go to notebooks if there's any kind of environmental or economic catastrophe that warrants it. But I share Trustee Smith Everett's sentiment that these are good times, and they may be fleeting. Warren Buffett in his annual meeting last week said that, you know, the time of great earnings for these businesses are over, and we're entering into some really uncertain times with geopolitics and everything. we're entering into some really uncertain times with geopolitics and everything. But I, I think your, your input is, is valued and treasured, and I think you hammered us on this in the '21 cycle when you talked about, and you just said it, that the, the credit hours are down. And I think the budget's not up. I think you mean to say the revenue's up.
Budget's up. We want to go 6,000, $6 million more next year.
I just voted against it, but Dr. Bound lowered the budget, just, just to be clear, because people listen to you.
Not the full budget, just the capital budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just the capital budget.
But you mean the revenue's up, a certain percentage?
The full budget goes from like 115 million as far as the tax, wherever it is at.
Okay.
So the budget's gone, but the capital budget is what we could reduce, because we obviously don't want to, we don't want to hit our teachers and our faculty. And so we attack the, the capital expenditures.
Okay.
And everything else we could affect.
So at any rate, I just wanted to put those comments in and...
And I only have one notebook, honestly, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I call this motion a question?
Since you ask the most questions, yes, I think that'd be a pro. All those in favor, the motion has been moved by whom? Trustee Muzel and Trustee Ingram, I believe, seconded.
Correct.
I may have said that already. All those in favor, now that the discussion has ended, seeing no further discussion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And all those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes Management and Finance.
You may, you may go under with your meetings, but your presentations.
Thank you for contributing to that.
Thank you for your leadership there, Trustee Muzel. Oh, birds, yeah, birds. Birds are important, right? Why are birds important, Dr. Antle?
Don't you be asking Greg that question?
Why are birds important there, Case Stater?
Because they are the pre- first successors to the dinosaurs. Without them, we wouldn't have had dinosaurs.
They also help cross-pollinate, right? And they're key to our, our food supply. Birds are critical. Birds can't live without cats, so.
We have some ecology classes.
I don't know what the nature of that study was. I just, I was intrigued by it. What was the nature of the study?
We found lots of birds, dead birds on campus, and we tried to figure out why.
Hi, Jay Arnold, sustainability historian, blah, blah, blah. The idea was, was started by some volunteers on campus with Crystal Anton and my staff, to go around and look at every window on campus where birds were striking, and they were striking in large numbers, figure out which windows should be triaged with graphic, with dots to help make sure the birds know they weren't flying into a tree, which they thought they were doing. We reduced the number of bird strikes on campus by over half, and the windows retreated by over 75%. And the folks in our, my staff who've done this work are now being asked to give papers at conferences for architects in Canada and all over the United States. And so it's a pretty robust work, and it's an example of grassroots work done here on campus.
Trustee Ingram has something for you.
If you would remind us how the birds express their appreciation.
I feel like I'm walking into a trap.
They tweeted. Do you not remember that coming up? Do you not remember that? Do you not remember that from the meeting?
Oh, I do.
I think it was still a preservation that that memory is known.
I'm ready for student success when you are.
Thank you, Dr. Antle.
That came up during the committee.
The, the next item, serious, like, we're running out of birds and bees, dude. Like, gotta save the birds.
He's from Case Stater, he doesn't understand.
He's telling me to move along, and I'm like, you know. The next item on our agenda is the Student Success Report by Trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Student Success Committee met at 11:00 AM on Wednesday, May the 3rd. The full report is in the board packet on pages 25 through 27. Our first report was on the Kansas Systemwide Transfer and Reludes Review, the Kansas Systemwide Transfer Agreement in effect between all public colleges and universities in Kansas. Affected no later than the 2024 fall semester, each Kansas public institution shall use a common system-wide general education framework within associates of arts degrees and associates of fine arts degrees, associate of science degrees, and all baccalaureate degrees. Our next update was from Alyssa Wildman regarding Panasonic. She reviewed the mission and vision of the workforce development opportunity with the Panasonic Energy North America Factory in DeSoto, Kansas. She outlined the five-stage approach, which includes pre-hiring support, training needs assessment, design and delivery of customized training, measuring outcomes, and ongoing training and support. She also provided a timeline of current activities and ongoing projects through 2025. The project is committed to training learners from a variety of backgrounds and skill levels. The Workforce Training Consortium, which includes the leadership team, the working group, and the partner group, has and will continue to meet weekly to address strategy and implementation issues. Wildman will continue to update the committee on the project's progress as details are finalized. Mickey McLeod provided a review of the current academic affairs reporting structure, and next highlighted what will and will not change with implementation of the provost role. The goals of this reorganization model include improved chain of command decision-making, consistency in messaging, and interpretation of JCC's mission, accountability, and better connections across campus through honest and open dialogue. Diane Smethers presented renewal agreements with school districts for the College Now program, and those were approved by the committee. Girbeshawn Singh presented an agreement with the VA Hospital, and that agreement was also approved by the committee. The next success, Student Success Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 7th, 2023, at 10:00 AM in the Hugh W. Spear Boardroom. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Trustee Ingram?
Real quick, all those get put on our consent agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay, just clarifying for the public that those do come back and come to the full board, that they're in our consent.
Consent agenda, you bet. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions, comments for Trustee Ingram? Thank you, Trustee Ingram. The next item on our agenda is the President's Recommendations for Action, the Treasurer's Report by Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Treasurer's Report can be found on pages 28 through 40 of your board packet, which include the month ended March 31st, 2023. Some items of note include the general post-secondary technical education funds, which are the primary operating funds of the college. An ad valorem tax distribution of 3.5 million was received from Johnson County on March 17th and recorded as followed. 3.3 is, goes into our general fund. 9,323 goes into our special assessment fund. 202,000 goes into our capital outlay fund for a total of that 3.5 that I mentioned. The general fund unencumbered cash balance was 109.2 million as of March 31st, 2023, and expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended March 31st, 2023, subject to audit, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made by Trustee Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Muzel. Any questions, comments for Trustee Smith Everett? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. That concludes your report, Trustee Smith Everett.
Yes, it does, Mr. Chairman.
The next item on our report is the Fiscal Year Board and Committee Meeting Dates by Dr. Ann Drew-Bound.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, trustees. You'll find, the public, you'll find in the board packet on page 41, after looking at schedule and, and identifying, you know, key dates, for example, in December, when we aren't following the third Thursday of the month because of, of just the way the calendar falls in December. So we'll see where the asterisk is, where we're out of sync with the third Thursday, but otherwise, it's there for your consideration, and I'd, I'd ask for approval of the budget. I don't know if you want me to read the motion that's there. I don't, I don't get to make, I guess here's the recommendation. It's a recommendation of college administration that the Board of Trustees approve fiscal year 24 meeting and committee meeting dates as listed above.
And...
Second?
I can't make the motion. I just was reading the recommendation.
Motion's been made by Trustee Muzel and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. Any discussion, questions for Dr. Bound?
I, I just want to thank y'all for not having an October 31st board meeting for the first time in my term.
Happy to accommodate it.
Is it, is it November 1st?
It's Thursday.
It's Thursday, okay.
Actually, that's committee meeting date.
Excuse me. Oh, we moved it up.
Yep.
Any other discussion, any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Dr. Bound?
All right. And thank you very much. All right, trustees. Again, appreciate the opportunity and gauge you with my monthly update. We're going to jump right in. Of particular note, we'll talk about enrollment. I will say, because there's not a slide in here for this, in the June committee meetings, we'll be doing the metrics report, metrics update for, in the committees where there are strategic land goals and metrics assigned. We'll be walking through those with you in those committee meetings, and then also summary discussion for you here at the board meeting in June. In addition to that, I just want to hit a couple other things related to the fantastic work that's happening here at the college and getting to celebrate the work of our students and our faculty and staff. Again, you had the opportunity to spend time on Grant. Again, our students come to us in very, very different phases of life, and so it's always fun to bring you a wide variety of students. All right. Continuing ed enrollment for workforce and continuing ed, there's still about a week and a half left in their, their year from a spring term semester standpoint. We're just up over 5,000 students in this semester. Keep in mind, that's less than last year, but last year's enrollment was heavily influenced with stimulus COVID relief funding. So again, they've had a fantastic year up over where they were in '21. If we look at their summer enrollment, we're at the, you know, the early period of enrolling for summer courses. Again, you'll see here that there actually is an increase over each of the past two years, and the team there continues to do fantastic work in serving individual learners that may be receiving work-related training, they may be customized training with employers, they may also be folks that are signing up, kids for summer camps, and a wide variety of other opportunities, including high school completion. All right. If we look at our summer enrollment on the credit side, summer's looking strong. 4% up comparing, you know, date to date, point in time, up 4% on head count and 6.4% in credit hours, which again, I, I recognize the team for doing great work and appreciate that our students are coming back. Both those that are already enrolled with us and are continuing students, as well as students who are coming in, transferring in for the summer courses. Looks strong. Fall, we are very early in the process, so I wanted to be very cautious with the numbers that are here. We're about six tenths of a percent down compared point in time over a year ago. We did begin the cycle later than we did, about a week later than what we did last year. So that will, you know, the, being off, you'd expect it to be a little bit off, but the fact that we're, you know, off just over half a percent is, is a good thing. And you can see then already on the credit side, students enrolling for this next fall, you know, out of the gate, we're ahead of where we were last year from a credit hour standpoint. As a reminder to all of us in the room, but particularly those who may be watching this meeting, the head count drives service, and the credit hours drive the financial side of it. So I would say, you know, at this point, summer's looking really good, and we're very optimistic for the fall. All right. We are at the point, as was alluded to, Dr. View, you know, acknowledged in her comments, the fact that we are full with recognitions of our students. And, and as I say this repeatedly, the fact that our students are doing so well, and a point of celebration in their lives is a direct reflection of the work that our faculty and staff do each and every day. And I know our students are incredibly appreciative, and I certainly am as well. And so thank you for the good work you're doing with our students. So this next nine or 10 days is abundantly full of celebration. I know many of you will be joining us for those, those celebrations. So thank you very much for participating. I often tell you, you know, from, from my perspective, that's payday for you. And so we'd love to be able to offer you more. We have commencement season. Anyways, all right. But also included in this are high school graduations. So Dr. McLeod and I, for example, you know, that weekend of, next weekend, the weekend of our commencement, we will also be in several of the Blue Valley commencement ceremonies, where we'll be greeting those students with their associate degrees. So again, exciting news. So what does it look like from a number standpoint? This is what our numbers look like when we look at the number of graduates. So this isn't talking about the number of credentials, because it may be that a student who's graduating is graduating with both a certificate as well as an associate degree, or multiple certificates. This is the, the raw head count, the number of people who are earning a credential over this year. I want to be cautious when you see the number for spring of 1,412 students. That is, those are students who are candidates for graduation. They have to complete their courses, and graduate audit, graduation audits need to be finalized, performed. We often see about a 15% swing between those who apply for graduation and actually graduate. So if, if you take that number at 85% or down 15%, we come out just a little bit ahead of where we were last year with graduations. That is an estimate. But I will tell you, when you look at summer graduates and fall graduates, both of those term and semester have strong graduation numbers. What's exciting for me as well is when you look at the number of students who are graduating with honors, right? The, the president's award is a cumulative GPA, a cumulative GPA of 4.0, and a, the dean's award goes to a student with 3.5 to just under the 4.0. And, and those numbers are up as compared to last year. So though, that bodes well for the number of students who will be graduating. In addition to that, up in the top right corner, we said there are greater than 120 students earning their GEDs as of today. That's 125. Last year, we had 137. And in talking to Vice President Wildman, she is pretty sure we will exceed that number this year, because students are completing their examinations between now and their graduation ceremony. So that is really, really, really good news. And so the last thing I want to say is thank you to our students who choose to come here, our faculty and staff, who do such a great job of serving our students, to you as trustees who provide the governance for this fine institution, and our community partners. We've had a really strong year from a student standpoint, and we have much to celebrate and much to be proud of, and thank you very much. That concludes my report. Other than the third questions?
Thank you, Dr. Bound. Any questions for Dr. Bound?
I just have a comment that I hope we can capture those GED students, make sure they continue on by joining us for the next chapter. We, last year's ceremony, I had a neighbor come up to me. I had no idea that they dropped out, and they were there to, to complete their GED, and I had, I, I was just blown away that they had dropped out. I had no idea.
that they had dropped out, I had no idea. But so many kids are still digging themselves out of COVID, and this is one of the ways that they can do that and better their lives, and I hope they'll continue with us after that, too.
And if I remember correctly, and I'm looking to Vice President Waldman, it is, we offer six credits to the graduates of...
Yes.
So we help them get a good start with their ongoing education at Johnson County Community College.
As well as a few other scholarships that are awarded during the ceremony.
Seeing?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Are we tracking that to see how many students took advantage of that?
We do track that, yes.
Okay.
You give them six hours for what? Sorry?
For graduating with a GED.
Two free classes.
Six, basically two free classes at three credits each, so six credits.
Okay.
They're given the opportunity to take six credit hours.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
They're not awarded six credit hours.
No, 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 yeah, 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 thank you, yes. They're provided with the opportunity to earn six credits, two classes for free.
I missed that, thank you for explaining it.
Thank you, I misspoke.
No, 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 I, I didn't understand. Any other questions for Dr. Bound? I will say, in this conundrum of COVID and enrollment being down, I'm proud of you for the, the 29:05, my math is that that is about 92.66% of where we were in 2018, 19. So I mean, that's, that's really a good job to everybody involved to make, make do with what we have and try to make lemonade, and so, thank you for that. And just to echo Dr. Bound's, thank you to the student staff and faculty and everybody. Any other questions for Dr. Bound? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is new business. Is there any new business for the good of the order? None? We move to old business, is there any old business? Seeing none. The next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. It's a regular monthly reports and recommendations that'll be taken up in, generally just do one motion for the Consent Agenda, right?
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented in the Board Packet from pages 42 to approximately 52?
Second.
Motion has been moved by Trustee Ingram and seconded by Trustee Ratan. And any discussion on the Consent Agenda?
I did wonder when I was reading it, if we are, if we are finally, the last retirees are the last of the, that took advantage of the verb, or is that, was that already before this? I was thinking that, there was like, maybe, there was somebody mentioned for giving to the scholarship in their retirement. I'm sorry, I don't have it up, I don't, I don't know where it is. I just didn't know if they were the last, yes. If this was the last round of people that took advantage of the verb. Sorry, bringing it up there.
Individuals who, Colleen Chandler, Vice President of Human Resources, individuals who have previously elected to retire indicating their intention to take advantage of her have appeared in previous Board Pockets closer to the time of their notification.
Okay.
The reference to the awards to the foundation and such in lieu of a retirement may include individuals who took advantage of her, but they previously were included closer to their time of notification.
Thank you.
While I have you, Vice President Chamberlain, I'm sorry to pick on you, and I think every speaker that's come up to the microphone tonight does it. We take great pride in employing you, and we're thankful to have you, despite the fact that some of us ask you questions and grill you and may not always express that appreciation. But without picking anybody else, and at the risk that Senator Bumgarner or somebody watches this and they're like, who was that? It was Colleen Chandler, Vice President of Human Resources?
Colleen Chandler.
Colleen Chandler, Vice President of Human Resources, it was Jay Antle, Professor of Sustainability, right? Just, just slowly pronounce your name, because I don't want to talk to Senator Bumgarner about who couldn't or could understand the speaker at the podium. Just take your time. I talk too much, and I'm sorry to pick on you. We're proud of you.
Good point.
Good job.
Thank you.
Motion has been moved by, I don't even know.
Ingram and Ratan.
Trustee Ingram, seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is, we have a series of executive sessions?
One.
Just one, thank you.
Okay.
So we're going to move into executive session. I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individual and/or individuals to be discussed. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for one hour, beginning at, what time?
7:20?
It'll end at 8:20, at which time, open session will resume at this same location. We would like to invite Dr. Andrew Bound and Kelsey Nazar to join this executive session. May I have such a motion, please?
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Laura Smith Everett makes the motion, Trustee Nancy Ingram seconds it, and I don't believe we need to adjourn, do we? Okay, we will see you back here.
You can vote, though.
We have to vote, though. Mm-hmm.
The motion's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? No, it passes unanimously. We'll see you back here at eight, seven, 8:20.
8:20.
Okay, we're back after executive session, in which no action was taken, and I think Dr. Bound has something he'd like to say.
I would just like to say to you as trustees, thank you very much for approving the budget so that we can move forward with the start of the next fiscal year. Thank you for your leadership.
And with that, unless anybody has anything for the good of the order, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been moved by Trustee Ingram and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.